Good evening. Seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This evening, we have seated Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Gary Belkey, Lynn Conway, and our alternate Bennett Brissette. Andy Meek is off in his boat tonight. We will be conducting some in-house business, and my chairmanship is up by the end of the month. So this will be my next-to-the-last meeting. There's another meeting day after tomorrow for our presentation of the regulation rewrite. I'll be there for that. And do I hear a nomination for the chair?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ryan. I'd like to nominate Chuck Sheehan for the chairman of the committee. He's probably one of the most knowledgeable people about with the regs and zoning and has extensive experience in handling this, and I think he'd be a great person to carry on the excellent work you've done.
Ryan, are there any other nominations? Do I hear a second?
I second the nomination.
Thank you, Gary. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed?
Abstained.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So carried.
Thank you all. I'm gratified for the unanimous support. Thank you.
Good luck. Moving on to minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1732 on July 20th, 2023, as written and submitted.
Thank you. Ryan, any other discussion?
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve meeting, the minutes written as submitted for meeting number 1733 from August 1st, 2023.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think there's any correspondence, Clifton. So I guess we'll move right on to your administrative review.
Sounds good. First item on the administrative review is number 23184, zoning permit for Lockwood Coastside Marina LLC. Zoning permit application to demo and reconstruct a building, hotel building on site. Property is located at 830 Stonington Road, map block lot 57-2-11 in the MC80 zone. And Mr. Terrello, the applicant, is here for presentation and any discussions.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Terrello. I'm an architect and planner with Terrello Associates. Been around since the 60s. And I just wanted to give a little background from my perspective as to why we're here today. My original job was to do some work on the existing building that was in pretty bad shape, and we did that. And unfortunately, I was depending on the information given by the owner as it was transmitted to him regarding what the restrictions would be at that point. During that process, he was looking to raise the roof to get a little more headroom on it, and it was only a simple job for the existing building. But it turned out that the owner and the building department decided that the best bet was to raise the building, R-A-Z-E rather than R-A-I-S-E. And that's what they did, and all of a sudden, I found the job changed. And I was informed that what we needed to do was to decide whether the existing foundation was, could be built upon again. And that's what they decided to do, to build a new one on top of that. Unfortunately, I wasn't made aware of some of the restrictions that were put on the original approval for the motel way back when and under the previous owner. So we went full bore into what we were doing and didn't realize that there was a restriction on the amount of square footage for each of the floors. In other words, I was just under the assumption if we stayed in the footprint, we'd be okay. We wouldn't have to go to planning and zoning or anything and just get a zoning permit and get a building permit. Well, it turned out, we did a whole bunch of plans, and I was informed by staff that there were those restrictions, and we went back and redid it again, under the same idea, basically, that all we had to do was to make sure we stayed within those parameters and we would get a zoning permit and a building permit and go forward. When I started dealing with the building department, very nice, they informed me of the problem with the building down by the water, that that was probably more important than the other item. And at that point, we got into discussion with the owner and what we were going to do, and I had hired both a surveyor and an engineer to look at that building. Now, I have a lot of experience in this kind of work. I've been doing work along the coast, you know, in the hurricanes and everything like that, so I take a very active role in that. And the owner decided that in order to comply, he would start the demolition of that, the lower section of the building that was below the required height.
Excuse me, I'm a little lost on which building you're now talking about. The one by the water or the one, the old hotel by the road?
Well, what it is is that, can I get to that? I think, so what happened was is that we went along and finished our construction drawings and then were informed that they were going to, that we were going to go for administrative review. And that was at the end, basically, when we were ready to get our zoning permit. And we were going on the principle of doing construction drawings, and we didn't do anything, really, for renderings, the kinds of things that would be required to go before your design review board. So when that happened, we were under the gun to get everything finished, and because of an illness in my company, my draftsman who did my renderings, we couldn't meet the first design review board meeting in the winter. So we asked for a tabling, and we came back again when we were able to do a little bit more work on the design. I was interested in speaking with the committee or the board and getting some of their input because we had a couple of different ideas on how we would treat the exterior. But when we went there, I was surprised to find that it was kind of an adversarial type of confrontation. We had asked for a waiver of the landscape architect requirement that the design review board says had to be done. And of course, our point was, we're not doing anything to the rest of the site. We're just reconstructing the building where it was. Everything was there. We had surveys. The utilities were there, so we didn't need a site plan or anything like that, which normally we would do if we came to planning and zoning. So we were confronted at that point, and we never got to, never got to even make a presentation. It got to be towards the end of the meeting, and they said, "It's nine o'clock. We're not going to take this up." And I had to turn around and walk away without even a protest. We came back the next time, and upon the advice of the staff, we did hire a landscape architect who did a plan showing why we didn't need a landscape architect. And of course, the design review board didn't like that very much, and again, gave us a very difficult time. But we did, at least this time, I made sure that they reviewed the design. The problem was, we didn't get any kind of feedback that made any sense, that they, every, each one of the commissioners had a different kind of minor view that they wanted to do. And so when this came back to you, well, let me back up a little bit. When I left the meeting, there was no vote or anything like that, so I didn't know what was going on. I got to drive two hours back to where I live with my landscape architect, who was terrified because the smoke was coming out of my ears as I was leaving. And the next day, I found out they did approve with the conditions, and then it went to you. So I thought it was done by then, but then it came to you, and I understand now that the main reason was the situation with the zoning violation as to why you didn't act. Now, if I'd have known that in the beginning, we wouldn't have had all of this hardship, and I apologize for my part in that. It was just one of those things. So that's where we are now. I would be happy to accommodate this commission in terms of anything they would like to see occur. I believe there has been some movement forward. The building has been demolished. There has been a lien put on, as I understand, from the building department. I had nothing to do with that, but I understand that's happened. So I would like to know what it is we need to do to be able to get started on this. It's been a while.
Thank you. So just to be absolutely clear, we're talking about the foundation, empty foundation?
Yes, the front building, yes.
Okay, because you had mentioned a lower building by the water.
Yeah, the lower building is the one that started the whole process of coming before you.
I don't want to hear anything about that. Okay.
But that was the reason, as I understand, why it was not approved, because they did approve the board's thing. Okay, all right.
Does the board have any questions before I get to you, Clifton? Any other questions for Mr. Terrell?
So just so I understand, and I'm sorry, I tried to follow, but what's the purpose of this building?
The purpose is, it is legally a motel.
Uh-huh.
It's called a motel. It's part of the marina, and it's not like a typical motel that you see right on the road with flashing signs and that kind of thing. It's meant mostly for seasonal occupancy, more like a lodge, we would call it, something like a, you know, the equivalent of a ski lodge or something like that, that people would go to. The actual requirement is that it is limited to five units. The building that was there before, that they got the approval for through zoning, zoning board of appeals way back when, was to eliminate six units in favor of building five in a new structure, which they did. This was 30 some odd years ago, as I understand it. But it did say that there could be two sleep, two rooms, two bedrooms, or two units, whatever you want to call it, per, two sleeping units, or whatever you want to call them, for each motel unit.
Right.
But they wanted to eliminate the kitchens that were in the original building because, for all intensive purposes, it really did not act as a motel. It was more like a multifamily. There was a kitchen, full kitchen, kitchen dining, and a room on the back side with a view to the water, and then there was a loft above, and that was another unit, so to speak, if you want to call it that. So we had to go back and redesign and make sure it fit in the parameters that were set way back when as to what could be built there. So we're just building it pretty much the way it looked before, without it looking like a, well, the wreck of the Hespera, as my mother would say, and to fit in nicely with your historic, the historic nature of the neighborhood in a way that was sort of a hybrid between a residential and a commercial use. The good thing is, is that the building is set back off the road, and its importance is more for the people who are coming to the site for the first time, because there will be units and there's a common room with a common kitchen, and that was part of the original approval. So that's what we have there now.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, have you acted upon or adopted the recommendations?
I'm sorry?
Have you acted upon the conditions of the architectural review board?
Yeah, I've looked at those, and I think we can comply with them, but it's unclear what they mean. They were not specific. It said something about eliminating some of the trim or something. I don't know what that means. You know, is it, we were willing to discuss that. We never got a chance to discuss it because the big item was the building in the back, and we couldn't get any input. Now, I've spent a lot of time in town here, you know, looking at buildings that are up and down the road, all the way through to Mystic and then into the borough and everything like that, and I see a very eclectic mix. But I want to have something that fits in but is not obtrusive, if you want to call it that. And by virtue of where it's located, it, you really can't see it from the road in any direction until you really get to the driveway, and it's set up on top of the rock bluff there. And the thing we wanted to do was to make it not look like the back of a tenement house, like the backside was at the time, because we wanted to give that some scale and make it visible from the, identifiable from the water. As people came in, they'd know that was the place where they were birthing and things like that. So we designed it in the round, if you want to call it that.
Thank you.
Clifton?
So just in review of the previous application that was denied by the commission, one of the main elements was from the town's recommendation that because of an existing zoning violation, this applicant couldn't apply. So what was included in the packet was, you know, the conversation or the agreement between the town's building department and the applicant on resolving the lien. And so basically, one of the stipulation for this approval would be, once that is paid, the approval for the zoning permit could be granted, then they could proceed with the project. And so between the previous denial and this application, that's the one item that was left unresolved and the one item that has been partially resolved.
Thank you.
Clifton, if I can ask, there's a note here about, is it the timing of a submission that you would be required to, that's what?
I can't hear you. Sorry. Ryan?
Oh, I was reading something. Is that for the other one? Okay. Apology.
Chuck has a question?
How long did this operate as a hotel? And just for my own, I realize it has nothing to do with the approval, but the historic, the history of it is important to me.
Yes.
How long did it actually operate as?
Oh, let me see. Goes back to, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the photograph, you can see what it looked like.
Yeah, I know. It looks like a long time ago.
Your zoning enforcement officer was very helpful in that regard. When I went to finally meet her, she gave me a packet about this thick that showed me all of the things that were there, and it had a very, very serpentine path. Now, let me see now if I can find that exact date. I mean, I recall it was back, went back to the 50s sometime.
Fifty, okay.
I think a lot of, a lot of, a lot of work was done without permits, and the prior owner got himself in a lot of trouble, I guess, and that's where, that's what started all of this. Mr. Lockwood bought the property.
And when did it close?
Pardon?
And when did it close? When did it cease to operate as a hotel? Just roughly.
Oh, I, it, I started just before the pandemic, going through it, and it was starting to show the problems of disuse around that time.
Okay. So around 2019?
It probably was before that.
Okay.
I mean, things were starting to fall down.
That's good enough. Thank you.
Yeah. Probably in the mid-2000s, something like that.
One of the things that came up, both with the original application and the first time around, and then this one, was whether or not that the property was abandoned because the demolition was under the direction of the building department specifically. This doesn't fall under the abandonment piece that we've discussed before. So the motel use is still valid.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application submitted with the one recommended stipulation that the applicant shall pay the town of Stonington an outstanding lien amount of $75,000 prior to approval of a zoning permit.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there further discussion?
Yes. So I'm looking at the staff report, and I'm looking at the table that has the zone bulk use requirements, and although there was a variance given for the side setbacks, it doesn't look like the frontage is.
Are you looking at the right?
Yeah, that's the next.
That's the next.
Am I not looking at the right?
2316 SUP.
There is a building, there is a building close to the road, which is a former residential building, on the right-hand side of the drive.
It's on, Clifton, it's on page?
Yeah, that's for the, that's for the next application.
I'm sorry?
That's for the next application.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Confused. Okay. And we don't have any renderings of the back of the building?
Pardon?
Do we have any renderings? Is there?
I have, I have renderings of that.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody seen? Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to the public hearing. Lynn, would you like to read the call?
Sure. I'm sorry. I'm just kind of confused on. I must be missing something here. Sorry. Excuse me. Pursuant to the general statute of the state of Connecticut, revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that we'll hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District office, 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 15th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the following application. PZ2316SUP and GPPPRC Holdings LLC, special use permit application to permit construction of a one-story, 800, excuse me, 8,220 square foot commercial office building. Proposal includes parking, a subsurface sewage disposal system, stormwater drainage, and associated site work. Property is located at 8 Alice Court, Pawtucket, Assessments Map, Assessor's Map 18, Block 2, Lot 5E, Zone HI60.
Thank you, Lynn. For this public hearing, we have seated this evening Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Gary Belkey, and Lynn Conway, with Bennett Brissette as our alternate. The process is, there's a sign-up sheet by the doorway if you'd like to speak up when the public speaking part is allowed. First, we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll have questions by the board during that time, and then we'll have public input, opposed, in favor, general comments, rebuttal by the applicant if necessary, staff import, input, and board questions. We will not be able to close this hearing this evening nor vote on it, so it will have to be continued at our next meeting because of some information that came in from the town engineer too close to the deadline for the public to have all its proper timeframe. And if I could ask the public to keep their voices down, I'm having a hard time hearing what's going on up here with a lot of the chatter in the background. So if you could just, thank you.
Good evening. My name is David McKay with Boundaries LLC, here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, PRC Holdings LLC. Our proposal is the development of 8 Alice Court. That's an existing lot of record that was created by an approved subdivision in 1974. This property is located on the east side of Route 49. Alice Court is about where Stop &amp; Shop is located. This is the last empty lot in the commercial subdivision. The first sheet is the existing condition survey showing the configuration of the lot. This is how it has existed since 1974, when it was created as part of the approved subdivision. One item to note is that variance was also granted for this property in the early 80s that reduced the side yard setbacks to 10 feet. The next sheet is the site development plan, showing the location of the proposed office building and accessories storage area. This property is located in the HI60 zoning district, and that comes with a couple of unique requirements as well. There's a proposed five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk along the frontage along Alice Court, and unique requirements of the HI60 zone, as well as a 20-foot-wide front yard landscape buffer to, oh, thank you. As well as a 20-foot-wide landscape buffer along the front yard. This property is surrounded by commercial properties, both to the east and west. North and to the south is a concrete and aggregate plant. The proposed uses as office space and accessory indoor storage are allowed uses under the zone. This is a special permit due to the size of the parking lot, based on the number of employees, 18 employees. We have 24 required parking spaces, and that triggers the special use permit for parking lots exceeding 20 spaces. This next sheet is our grading and stormwater management sheet. We have a stormwater basin in the southeast portion of the property that receives all runoff from the parking area, as well as runoff from the roof after it enters an infiltration system below the parking lot surface sized for one inch of runoff. This property is also located in the groundwater protection overlay district, so infiltration of stormwater is prohibited except for roof runoff. So we've provided infiltration for the roof, and then all other runoff from the parking area drains to the detention basin, where it will then be slowly released out to the southerly property line, which is currently a drainage swale that receives flow from the developed properties to the west. And that flow continues along the southerly property line, crossing over onto the property to the east, ultimately drains to the Pawtucket River, which is about 110 feet from our corner of the property. Stormwater treatment is being provided by a structural stormwater treatment system that's sized to remove 80% of the total suspended solids. Following sheet is our utility sheet. The only public utilities available are electric and gas. In the road, we will be connecting to natural gas for heating the building, but the project will be served by a private water supply well drilled in front of the building and a subsurface sewage disposal system located in this portion of the property. Both the well location and the subsurface sewage disposal system have been reviewed and approved by Ledgely Health District. In order to meet the requirements of the Architectural Design Review Board, as well as the HI60 zoning regulations, we've had a landscaping plan prepared by Bob Deletta, a licensed landscape architect in the state of Connecticut. He's prepared this plan, providing. Uh, he's prepared this plan, providing street trees and shrubs as stipulated in the HI sixty zoning regulations for the front yard buffer and the required street trees along the, um, parking area to provide the required shade for the, uh, parking spaces. And also has incorporated a planting plan to, uh, improve the, um, aesthetics and treatment value of the stormwater basin. Finally, sheet seven is our, uh, photometrics plan. Uh, the goal of the lighting on this project is to, uh, light up the parking lot adequately, um, and provide some emergency lighting over the emergency exits. As stated before, this property is surrounded by commercially zoned and commercially used properties, um, so light trespass is not a concern, um, with disrupting, uh, residences in the area. And, um, as you can see with the photometrics plan, there are just a few locations where, um, there's point-one-foot candles over the property line. Uh, lighting is being provided by three pole-mounted lights along the parking field and the entrance driveway, four building-mounted lights along the front of the building, and then the three emergency exit lights. Um, the pole lights are proposed at fourteen feet high, and the, uh, building mounted lights are proposed at ten feet high. Sheet eight is the, uh, erosion and sedimentation control plan. Uh, this is a very small lot. It's, uh, zero-point-eight acres, and, um, as such, most of the property is going to be disturbed to complete the development. The entire perimeter of the property will have a sediment fence. Uh, right now, the lot has, uh, high point generally in the middle of the lot, so runoff could go in any direction. So the whole property will be ringed with sediment fence. A crustone anti-tracking pad will be provided at the construction exit. And silt sack will be installed in Catch Basin in, um, Alice Court. And then additional measures are hay bale check dam at the property line to protect, um, downstream properties from any, um, disruption on the property. A stone check dam immediately down gradient of the stormwater discharge, and an additional double row of sediment fence in between the stormwater basin and the, um, development to protect the basin from sedimentation during construction and allow the vegetation to be thoroughly established before it receives any stormwater. And the remaining sheets are the, um, standard, uh, details for construction. This is the, uh, proposed building plan. It's, uh, proposed to be a fairly standard, uh, metal building, uh, which is, uh, consistent with the other buildings in the development. We met with the Architectural Design Review Board on, um, June twelfth. Um, they had some, uh, comments and recommendations on the interior layout of the building. Uh, those were addressed, and, um, and we did receive their approval. Uh, just for informational purposes, um, this is a view of the property, um, probably around two thousand and twenty or so. Um, it's, um, just an open grassed field at this point, although it is, uh, about this high now. And this is the, um, existing commercial building to the west on Six Alice Court. Existing commercial building to the east on Ten Alice Court. And the existing commercial building to the north across the street on Seven Alice Court. So, our proposal, uh, very consistent with the nature of the neighborhood, um, although we do have, uh, more substantial proposed landscaping in order to comply with the HI sixty zoning requirements. Uh, so as mentioned before, we have twenty-four parking spaces proposed, um, based on the parking calculation with one ADA space right next to the front door, and, um, that's, uh, summary of the proposed development. Uh, we did meet with ADRB. We met with the Board of Police Commissioners, and, uh, we did provide notification to the abutters on July twenty-seventh and provided copies of the, um, certified mail receipts to the planning department that day. Along with the application, we have submitted some waiver requests from the requirements for a special permit application, uh, specifically those are for the water impact study, sanitary sewer impact study, traffic impact study, archaeological study, flood hazard report, school impact evaluation report, providing a legal description of the property and providing phasing for the property. Regarding public utilities, um, this project, uh, does not have access to water or sewer and will use private utilities. Regarding traffic, this is a well-established commercial subdivision. Um, this is the last vacant lot in the subdivision, and it is intended to be used for an existing, um, business in town. So it wouldn't overburden the, um, the, uh, capacity of the road system, um, especially given that it directly, um, connects from Alice Court to Connecticut Route forty-nine. Uh, based on the archaeological study, we did complete test holes for the design of the, um, sewage disposal system and the stormwater basin, and found that much of the property has been excavated in the past down to ledge and refilled. Uh, we don't feel that there's any, um, arche- archaeological, um, value left if there was to begin with based on the, um, disturbed nature of the property. Uh, the property is not located in a FEMA-designated flood hazard area. Uh, the property and the use of the property will not generate additional students, uh, for the school. A legal description is already on file for this property, um, as it was, um, the result of an approved subdivision, and that legal description is part of the current deed. And, uh, as far as phasing goes, um, since it's the development of a single, uh, less than one acre lot, um, it will be completed in one phase. The, uh, criteria to evaluate this special permit application um, is included in section eight of the zoning regulations. Uh, we provided a written impact statement along with the application. And I'd be happy to read through that if, um, if, if you would like, um, but it was provided in writing. Um, as mentioned before, we did receive, um, plan review comments from the town engineer. Uh, we received those on August eighth last week, and we provided responses on August ninth. So at this point, we are just looking forward for concurrence that, um, we adequately addressed these comments. Hope to have those with plenty of time before the next meeting.
Thank you. Will you take questions?
That concludes my, uh, presentation. Be happy to take questions.
Would you like, anybody to ask questions? Chuck?
I see the, uh, planned use is commercial office. I think you may have said that also.
Yes, that's correct.
How many occupants in the building?
The, um, proposed use of the building is to have a total of seventeen office spaces and one reception space, a total of eighteen users.
Can't see the, uh, that, is there, is that overhead doors in the back of the building?
Yes. The building also includes, um, accessory storage for Pawtucket Roofing Company, which is the proposed, um, proposed user for the building. Uh, so the majority of the building is office space here, and then about twenty-six hundred square feet of open storage space.
The, so the, the basis of design is the seventeen occupants in the office. Any allocation for visitors?
Yes.
In the, in the waste, uh, subsurface sewage disposal system design?
That is just sized for the eighteen full-time employees on the site.
So you have a, a primary area and a reserve area on the plans, and that has been approved by Ledge Light, you said?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions.
Lynn? Karen?
I just got confused on the parking. You said twenty-four spots for the parking?
Yes, that's correct.
Then I heard eighteen mentioned to one time earlier.
Uh, eighteen is the number of employees.
Eighteen employees. I'm sorry. Thank you.
The parking is based on the square footage of the building. Um, and I believe I actually did misspeak and say that was based on the employees, but it's based on the square footage.
Any other questions? Is there any public input?
For the record, my name is Carlene Donna Rumo. There were two things that caught my eye in reading the staff report. One was, and has been confirmed by our new town planner, that it was a little boo-boo, little mistake. On the first page, it's showing the, um, requirements, and it says RH ten, and when I looked at that, I'm saying, wait a minute. This isn't RH ten. It's HI one, HI sixty, and he confirmed that was just a little typo. But the second thing that concerned me had to do with the waivers. And it was the waiver asking for a legal description of a pro- of a, of a, of the property. I don't think I have ever seen an application, or you have, come into this town without a legal description. And even if, and he testified that it was a, a lot that had been approved with the subdivision, I think they should have made the effort to get the legal description of that property, to put it on the record in that, in, in this application, so that there's no question, even though it's supposedly a quote, as Mr. Clifton, um, said, a re- a lot of record. Um, that kind of confused me, and I really think there should be a description. You could have gotten to, found the original plans and put them in the record, not that you have to go out and another, do another yu- lot, yu- another land survey. Um, but I, I kind of feel that they should, it should have been in the record, not just say it's there somewhere in the town, and that, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Please come up, state your name, address.
Oh, well, not yet. He mentioned Pawtucket Roofing, so is it that they're leaving their, their, um, established business at South Broad Street? And, and moving here and owning this, or is it that there isn't going to be an addition to that building? It would be interesting to know.
Okay, we'll see if he answers that question. Yes, sir. Line up.
Good evening. Don Rich. I'm a owner of, uh, one of the condos at Ten Alice Court. Uh, could the gentleman show us a picture of the building? What, a rendering?
This is the, uh, proposed building.
Okay, so there's going to be separate, these are all office spaces?
Yes, office space is in this portion of the building here.
Okay. And the storage area is for what use?
Uh, for the, uh...
Excuse me, gentlemen. Could you use the microphone so everybody could hear us? Yeah, thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
The storage is intended to be used for incidental supplies for the building, uh, for the business, um, which would be roofing supplies.
The business is going to be owned by a roofing company? The building?
That is, yes.
Okay. Uh, could you show that to my two other owners of the, uh, Alice Court? That's all I had. Thank you very much.
All set? Thank you. Would anybody else like to have a comment?
Yeah, I'm Richard Lotz, also at Ten Alice Court there.
I'm, I'm sorry, your name?
Richard Lotz.
Thank you.
Also at Ten Alice Court there. One of the things, uh, concerned to me is, uh, out the back of the, at Ten Alice Court there, it, it is kind of downhill from that property. I saw that he was requesting waivers on some of the runoff water. One of the concerns I have how that's done is that that water goes to the back corner, which is again higher than where we are, um, with, you know, the slab, steel building on slab there. So I just kind of like some clarification and to know how that drainage is going to work, where it won't affect us. In his, uh, you know, kind of commentary, he said that it would drain through the adjacent property, which I'm assuming, us being the lower property, would be there, and it kind of butts to where it goes uphill to West Con, you know, the asphalt place, or kind of across our property to the river, so kind of wanted to hear a little bit more about that, as to how it hopefully will not affect or be a problem at all.
Any other comments? Would you like to have a rebuttal, Mr. McKay?
Thank you. Uh, David McKay with Boundaries LLC. Uh, I took some notes, and I will, uh, try and respond to the, um, outstanding items. I apologize about the, uh, waiver for the legal description. Um, it is on file in the land records, so it would have been, uh, simple enough of me to include that in the application, but I, uh, felt that it was not necessary because it was already on file. Uh, but we can certainly, um, submit that for the record. Okay. And then regarding, uh, stormwater management, um... These are the, um, these are the figures from the stormwater management report showing how, um, stormwaters managed on the property. Uh, this area here, up at the front, is going to flow out to Alice Court.
Where's number ten, the neighbor's concerned?
Uh, number ten is right here.
And do you expect any flow going that way?
We have curbing along the entire, um, entire driveway from this point down to the start of the stormwater basin. So this stretch here, no runoff will be able to leave the, um...
That's a six-inch curb or something?
Yes, a six-inch curb along the, uh, along the entrance driveway. So no runoff from our paved areas would be able to impact this portion of the building. So all runoff from this area, including the roof and all pavement inside that area, goes into the stormwater basin. And the stormwater basin is sized with volume to hold the storm events in and slowly release them out through an outlet control structure. And that outlet control structure has a few orifices on it, um, of different diameters, and I'll, I'll pull that up in a minute, but they're generally very small diameters, uh, I believe a four-inch and a three-inch for the, um, typical storm events. So that really throttles the flow down, and the pipe drains right out at the stone wall with the West Con property, which is this area here. So runoff now from the majority of the property does flow to the south, and then there's a eroded ditch along the southerly property line, and that crosses right on at the property corner with Ten Alice Court. And so we're proposing to maintain that same pattern where runoff from our development will leave the site at this corner with, um, the intersection of the properties for Ten Alice Court and West Con. And we're matching that current flow pattern and current flow rates um, by providing the storage here that'll slowly release it out. here that'll slowly release it out over time. Just as an additional note, this is overall view of the drainage area that ends up in that ditch. So much of the Alice Court subdivision and other properties along Volantown Road all drain to the back of this property here, causing the erosion in that ditch, and then continue through 10 Alice Court, which is right here to the river. So we're proposing to maintain that same flow pattern, but proposing to control those rates so there's no change from what is currently experienced with the stormwater basin and the outlet control structure. And the outlet control structure has a three-inch orifice for low, small-volume storms, additional higher-up three-inch orifice for the middle-size storms, the 10 and 25-year events, and then a three-inch high by 10-inch wide orifice near the top of the structure for the 100-year storm event. And those all serve to control those peak flow rates to match what's currently leaving the site.
Great, thank you. And just to reiterate, the town engineers, numbers one through 19, you're comfortable with addressing and meeting?
Yes.
We don't need to go through them one by one, I just want to make sure, overall, you're comfortable with meeting his comments.
Yes, we've responded to his comments. I think we've adequately addressed each one individually and just waiting to hear back.
Great, thank you. Clifton?
One of the comments is that there can be no increase in runoff on any of the adjacent property owners, comment number 12. So he has, the town engineer does have his eye on the issue that's been raised by the gentleman in the audience.
Thank you, Chuck.
Chuck, let me just ask you, that six-inch curb that the applicant was alluding to, is that standard?
It is to catch runoff and prevent it from, you know, going across the property line.
Okay.
And it appears as though it's collected in the structure that's designed to handle the full watershed, which he indicated. So it's a standard, it's a standard analysis where he's looked at how the water is detained on site and gradually released so that there is no increase in runoff from what presently exists here now.
Okay.
The curb is backfilled, correct? There's, the curb is backfilled?
Yes.
Is it petuminous concrete, lip-curved?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was just going to add to what Chuck said, and as part of the, addressing the comments, the applicant did provide a stormwater management report as well as this stormwater management tables that address item 15, basically, you know, giving the time, max flow and outflow of the stormwater from that basin from the two to 100-year storms. So that was included in the set that was updated August 10th. And so that's one of the reasons why this needs to be continued is because that, this information came in so late as a result of the town engineer's comments coming in late. So that's why the report states that the public hearing should be extended, but that information has been provided to the town.
Thank you.
It's a pretty exhaustive analysis that you go through to include a 100-year storm. Just one additional note on 100-year storms, this year has sort of broke the mold on the rainfall charts, and I think the statisticians that maintain them are taking a look at some adjustments because with climate change, the rainfall patterns are changing dramatically, particularly in the northern part of the state, north and central part of the state, where they had the rainiest July on record since they've been keeping rainfall records in 1938. So it's absolutely something that caught everybody's eyes, so it's a very good question. But it is an exhaustive analysis still that's done, and 100-year storm is a substantive of that still.
I guess I just wonder if one of the comment from the public on 10 Alice Court, whether they are currently feeling issues with the runoff, because everything is saying that it's not going to increase the flow, but if they're currently having issues with the runoff and the runoff, you know, continues, I just wonder if that's something that needs to be addressed.
I'm sure what the town engineer is looking at here under comment 12 is not only the volume of water, but the velocity and whether it's concentrated in one area or whether it's, there's a level spread or effect by the design. So, but again, those are, those are good points. If it simply maintained a discharge that's currently a problem, it wouldn't solve the problem. But he's looking at those issues of velocity, point discharge, and other things. And I think he conveys that in comment 12 under drainage comments. So Chris is a very competent civil engineer and I have confidence in him.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to continue this hearing until the next hearing on September 5th, I believe?
At least now, correct? The 5th?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Any further comments or discussion?
I'd just like everyone to know that I will not be here for that meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. So Bennett, you'll be on for that one. Very good. Do I hear a motion for adjourning the seat?
Make a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.